Good morning, everyone. Welcome to daylight saving time. I assume everyone's awake. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners Committee meeting. Today is Monday, March the 9th. It is 9:02 a.m. We're going to start the meeting today with prayer by Commissioner Bob Cole and then pledge by Commissioner Jerry Williamson. Please stand.
Good morning, everybody. Please join me. Great heavenly Father, as we come to you this morning, Lord, we just pray, Lord, to keep us all safe. Lord, just keep us in mind that we're simply stewards of that that you've shown us the stewardship of. Lord, and we pray in your name to watch over our military and keep all our first responders and our police and our military safe, those who look after us, Lord. Or just keep us civil in this meeting, and we give you praise in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Remind everyone, if you have a cellphone, please put it in silent mode. Anyone wishing to speak today, make sure you fill out a speaker's form here at the front desk for our minutes. This time, we'll go over the agenda for today and see if there are any changes or additions, and I'll start with Commissioner Jerry Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No additions today.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole.
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Lang Lynch.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Andrews.
No changes.
Mr. Blalot.
No changes.
Ms. Bell.
No changes.
Thank you. We will approve the agenda as presented without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item two, discussion of application to the UWF Haas Center for Northwest Florida Assets Valuation and Marketing Support Program partnership in the amount of $11,250 as a match for proposed update to the 2003 Military Spouse Technical Skills Inventory. And this is related to item number three. This is a request for grant application. So if there are any questions on this, otherwise, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is discussion of proposal from the UWF Haas Center in the amount of $22,500 for an update to the 2003 Military Spouse Technical Skills Inventory utilizing the UWF Northwest Florida Assets Valuation and Marketing Support match of $11,250. Shannon, do you want to address this at all?
Thank you. Items both number two and three are relating to the, as Commissioner Lynch mentioned, the Military Spouse Technical Skills Inventory. The item two is actually the application of the grant. It's a new program that UWF Haas Center has established, and it's any time that a government agency or a nonprofit wants to go out to do a study where that the UWF staff can complete, then they will pay for half of it as long as the other half is picked up by the government body or the nonprofit. So that's item number two. And item number three is actually the skills inventory of the military spouses. We feel like as we're going after aviation companies or from aviation companies to call centers, to customer contact centers, then we need to know the skill sets of these individuals that are here. And having the skills inventory will help give us that data. We're proposing putting interns at the commissary at Whiting Field, and they will be interviewing individuals as they come onboard, come into the grocery store basically, and asking them certain questions relating to their skill set. And this will be completed by the end of June, which is the grant cycle.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. Any questions? Commissioner Cole.
Shannon, I might also suggest I would assume the Navy still does a plan of the day. Comes out every morning. Every sailor's required to read it. I would think, you know, when we get with a captain out there, he'd be willing to maybe put an entry in there. He may probably do it on computer now, too, laptop, so that we need this information from the spouses. That'd be another way of getting it out, you know, in addition to your, you know, inventory you're going to do at the commissary. And when you get that information, could you let us know how many Navy wives we have in this area now?
Okay.
Or that number?
We can get the number, the count of the number of spouses and the, and how many we actually interview.
Okay. And can they extend this to perhaps not just wives but family members? You know, you may have a seventeen, eighteen-year-old son or daughter that could, you know, could fulfill some sort of...
Something I'll discuss with the UWF with.
Great. Thank you, Shannon. All right. Unless there are any other questions, I will move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item four, discussion of submission of application for the FY 2015-2016 Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $300,000 for continuation of property acquisition proximate to NAS Whiting Field and the outlying fields. Again, this is a program that's been ongoing for some time. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item five, discussion of submission of application for FY 2015-2016 Florida Defense Reinvestment Grant Agreement in the amount of $78,000 for military support services. Any questions, comments? I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes economic development. Thank you. And just for information, on Wednesday, I'll be down in Tallahassee making our request for Whiting Aviation Park funding to the Senate Economic Development Transportation Committee, so just for information. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. That concludes the Economic Development Committee report. This time, we'll move into the Administrative Committee. Number one is discussion of acquisition of conservation easement on 3.32 acre parcel adjacent to NAS Whiting Field owned by Elliott Leonard Pearson Dunn utilizing Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant, also known as DIG, as U.S. and U.S. Navy repi funding. Mr. Andrews?
We are involved in discussions in regard to, well, actually, we entered into a contract subject to board approval to purchase that parcel and the parcel that's coming up in item two for the appraised value.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
A conservation easement on the parcel.
Pardon?
Conservation easement on the parcel, not fee simple.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Just for the record, on both these pieces of property we're discussing, when you purchase conservation easements, taxes are still paid on these properties?
Yes, subject to the conservation easement.
Thank you.
I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number two, discussion of acquisition of conservation easement on 3.33 acre parcel adjacent to NAS Whiting Field owned by Martha Pierce utilizing the Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant DIG and U.S. Navy repi funding, just like the previous one. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number three, discussion of agreement with Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services for Agriculture Best Management Practices, Conservation Technician Services and Soil Conservation Department. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a description from Trent Matthews, who's the district conservationist, and Mr. Matthews is here regarding a Department of Agriculture, Florida Department of Agriculture program for the best management practices. And what this essentially does is they will contract with Santa Rosa County to establish a technician position in the Soil Conservation Department, and in that, that position will be responsible to administer the best management practice program through Tallahassee, and then I assume under the supervision of Mr. Matthews. And this is kind of the model that we've used in the past, is that the conservationist is a federal employee, the Santa Rosa County is responsible for the technicians, which are with the secretary, and I believe there are four other technicians there, and that's our portion of the, and we provide the office space, and then they provide the vehicles.
Name and address, please.
Turn your mic on, please. Oh, there it is. It is, okay. Here we go. Yeah, Mr. Walker's correct in that we have always had a partnership as a federal agency and the county, and what we're doing is here is trying to bring in the state, kind of expand our reach a little bit. The Best Management Practices Program is something that's established by the Florida Department of Agriculture with input from DEP and the agricultural community to establish a baseline of practices that certain categories of farms should be implementing on their operation to protect the environment and the resources as a whole. And it's a voluntary program, voluntary adoption by agricultural producers unless they're in a watershed that's impaired water body and they have TMDLs or total maximum daily loads established for those watersheds, which currently we don't in Santa Rosa County for agriculture purposes, but we have farmers who are interested in voluntarily adopting some of these things. The problem we have currently is that the state doesn't have the human resources to service our area, so what they've asked us to do is to hire an employee in which they will reimburse or entered into an agreement to reimburse for the cost of that employee plus resources on vehicles and equipment that they would need to do their job. And so that's what we're asking today is to move forward with pursuing an agreement in such a manner with the state and Florida Department of Agriculture.
Appreciate that, and let me just say this. Sometimes we talk about economic development and everything we're trying to do in our industrial parks and Whiting Field, and all that's very important, including tourism. Sometimes we forget about the importance of agriculture farming. It's one of those quiet things that just kind of happens with a lot of people doing a lot of hard work. So Trent, we appreciate everything you and your organization does. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
And I would note that this position will be, the wording on that would include this will be a grant fund position, and then once the program goes away, then potentially that position would go away.
Okay. Thank you, Trent. Number four, discussion of mediation settlement agreement and general release regarding Tahar and Cronly Property Company litigation. Mr. Walker? Ms. Andrews?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a settlement agreement that was entered into or would be, was recommended be entered into after a long day of mediation. It provides for the construction of a parking lot that would be proximate to the building that's occupied, previous or currently, and it would be, we hope, occupied by Navy Federal Credit Union out of the industrial park. There'd be a construction of the parking lot. The property would be deeded to Tahar and Cronly. There's also a rental agreement in regard to a storage structure that's being currently utilized by the Sheriff's Department that would be rented for a period of seven years, and the Florida Association of Counties is paying $100,000, which is the policy limits to resolve the litigation. This has been an ongoing case that we've worked toward a resolution of for several years.
Be happy to answer any questions that we have. Mr. Warner, Tim Warner, who's litigation counsel here, if there are any questions from the board.
Any comments, questions by the board? Any other comments? Thank you, Roy. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Tim. Number five, discussion of settlement agreement for workers' compensation claim in the amount of $105,000 for former employee as recommended by the risk manager. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you see the information from Mr. Cook, the risk manager, and also from Joe Hyman, who is an attorney that specializes in workers' compensation matters, and you see the, he's done the math over what they call, this employee got hurt on the job, and this is an opportunity to settle that out at $100, and I believe it's $5,000, and then we have no other involvement with it. Mr. Cook's here to discuss that. Any...
Any questions, comment? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number six, discussion of proposal from Playmore Recreation Products and Services in the amount of $173,882 for inclusive playground at Navarre Youth Sports Complex funded by District Four Recreation Funds. Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may remember this item from last month. This is an all-inclusive play, playground area to be located at NYSA Park. The RFP process is now complete, and the vendor that was selected was Playmore Recreational Products Company. Playmore best met the qualifications as set forward in the RFP, and at the best price, they were roughly $59,000 less than the second most qualified vendor. We anticipate if approval project completion by June 1st, and there's no, are there any questions on this matter? If not, then board action related to this will actually be taken up in item 16 of the Budget and Financial Management Committee, when I'll ask for the budget amendment to be moved to Thursday. So this is more of an informational item. You've got the information from the different quotes and the different companies in your backup, and nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I guess we do need to approve the selection of Playmore Recreational Products Company as the vendor for this project, and I would ask that that be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Commissioner Cole.
Just one question on the footnote down here at the bottom, the access, it says $8,500 for excavation of site. Are we going to get Public Works to do that for you, or how? I didn't see it anywhere in this itemization.
One more time, the excavation?
At the bottom here, you got add $8,500 for excavation of site does not include removal spoils. I didn't see it in this listing, so are we using Public Works for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
There's going to be, and that's a good question, Commissioner Cole, there's going to be a meeting held with Public Works and Tammy of Parks and Rec and the NYSA Board, as well as our good friends at Public Works to look at the site and make sure that everything has been prepared properly so that when they bring in the playground, that we're leveled and ready to go.
It sounds like you got a lot of good involvement from the citizens down there, so we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number seven, discussion of letter to Northwest Florida Regional Transportation Planning Organization requesting support for advancing funding for Navarre Community Access Road to align with PDNE for widening of US 98 from Portside Drive to Okaloosa County Line. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a letter that Mr. Ward, the transportation planner, was, had recommended forwarding to the regional TPO. I recommended that instead of it coming over his signature, it should be from the chairman. I just think that has more weight, and it's my understanding that this tries to align the PDNE on the Community Access Road with the widening efforts or the planning of the widening efforts on the eastern segment of US 98, which they're studying the same area in the sense...
Any discussion by the board? Anyone in the audience? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number eight, discussion of resolution supporting the placement of signage recognizing the boundary of Navarre Community. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a proposed resolution. I think this is a requirement of the Department of Transportation regarding the placement of a welcome sign in the Navarre community as you're going south on 87, Interstate 87. And this, I believe, this places it proximate to the East River Bridge that it seems to be the beginning point of the Navarre community. Obviously, it's not incorporated. It's just kind of a slight pace. Pace just kind of spreads out over half the free world, but it's, this is an effort to try to outline where that is.
Mr. Rob Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Hunter said, this is just an effort to get the current sign relocated to the more recognizable starting point of Navarre, and through conversations with some folks in Holly that are actually here today, you know, the U.S. Census identifies that East River is the dividing line. The voting precinct is separated by the East River, and this is, as the county administrator has identified, just a procedural matter that we provide this resolution to DOT to where we can get that done. So I'd ask that this matter be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Anyone wants to speak to it? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Okay. Donna Harville, 3352, Highway 87, Navarre, Florida. We do ask that the Holly sign be left that was placed by FDOT. We have no objection to the new, as a matter of fact, we welcome the new placement of the Navarre sign, but we just ask that the Holly be defined by our sign that it took years for us to get up from FDOT. Thank you.
We truly understand, never get Navarre and Holly confused.
(inaudible).
Yes, here you go. We have a sign up in Shamukla that says, "Welcome to Shamukla." Hearing no other comments. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. We have GPS up there bottom. Number nine, discussion of District Four improvement plans, study results. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Williamson.
Commissioner Williamson, Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is information only. Just wanted to provide the survey results to get that as part of the backup and as part of the record, as well as to provide an opportunity for any of my fellow commissioners to comment or ask questions about it. Real briefly, it was the largest response that we've ever had in District Four. We had over 1,000 respondents. I think the record before that was somewhere around the 300 mark. There was a cost to the taxpayers for the Haas Center to verify the survey results. It was $750. We just recently finished three public meetings at three different times of the day. We had a 9:00 a.m., a 6:00 p.m., and a 2:00 p.m. meeting to provide an opportunity for public comment, and the, there was 13 possible improvements listed on the survey, and just want to put a shout out to Joy and to Brandon and others that worked on this on the staff level. They really did a great job. They actually wrote the code for this survey from scratch and really helped get through some snags with the initial rollout of it, and just really did a great job of bringing this forward. The most important attribute that was identified from the survey was Navarre Beach Natural Beauty, and number two right behind that was our education system. That shouldn't come as a surprise to folks. In the District Four area, the top five areas out of the 13 that were listed as possible improvements, you can see there traffic safety, reducing congestion, that was number one. There's, the 13th ranked item was the bringing forward of a community center or a meeting space. That was actually the least important of the 13 items to the folks in the District Four area. And you can see some of these you've already been working on in the past, and other ones we're going to be focusing our efforts on moving forward. And as I said, this is for information only, no board action, but I am available to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Jerry Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Williamson, as far as the attendance that you had at the 9 o'clock, the 2 o'clock, and the 6 o'clock, how did those vary? Were they about the same, or was one more, you know, well attended than the other?
It's a good question. The 9:00 a.m. one was the Navarre Commerce and Coffee, and Tony Alexander, the executive director, told me they usually average about 100 to 110, and they had 150 there for that meeting. And then the 6 o'clock, Joy, would you say about between 35 and 40? 30? So we had 30 folks for the evening meeting, and about the same for the 2 o'clock. So the 6 and 2 o'clock were pretty much the same, but all told, you know, pretty well attendance. Folks seem to be leaning in and paying attention.
I appreciate you getting out to your community and finding out what they want, and then planning from there, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, just, Mr. Williamson, is this a template, something that perhaps, I was looking it over, perhaps we could use in each district as a Haas Center? You think they'll make it available as a template? Of course, there'd be a charge, but...
Well, I don't know as far as that goes. I know that the results, them taking a look at the results and validating the results of the survey, we were able to save some funds by us creating the survey ourself because constant contact actually doesn't provide a survey in the manner that I requested it be brought forward, and that is that you'd have a list of improvements, and then we asked folks in the community to provide their top five and then rank those in order of importance to them, one through five. So you could not only find out what's most important to folks, but in what particular order. That's how we were able to come up with, knowing that improved traffic safety and reducing congestion was the number one, and what had previously been a great deal of effort been put forward on a community center, we found out was the least important. So as far as a template goes, the only thing that I would say that each district is likely to have different improvements that are important to that district, and if creating those and putting them into this type of survey, I feel it really gives you a great opportunity to know and be plugged in for what the folks within your specific district, what's important to them. And then what I did was, we took all of those 13 improvements that were part of the survey, and we broke them into four different buckets, if you will, or silos, between infrastructure and economic development, tourism, quality of life, and we put them into these different silos at the ranking that they had. So if you look at the PowerPoint presentation, for example, if you turn to page two, it has infrastructure. You have number one, traffic safety, then reduced traffic congestion, stormwater drainage. That was the number two ranked under the infrastructure silo. Number three, bicycle pedestrian, that was number three in that, and even though you see, you know, community meeting space... between infrastructure and economic development, tourism, quality of life. And we, we put them into these different silos at the ranking that they had. So if you look at the PowerPoint presentation, for example, if you turn to page two, it has infrastructure. You have number one, traffic safety, then reduced traffic congestion, stormwater drainage. That was the number two ranked under the infrastructure silo. Number three, bicycle pedestrian, that was number three in that. And even though you see, you know, community meeting space, multi-use community meeting space, even though that was ranked dead last in the overall survey, it's still included in infrastructure. It's just the last item under infrastructure. So that's seemed to be what was going to work out with our district, just from the focus group that we had, and, and trying to have the understanding that as we move forward, we're probably going to have additional improvements that folks will want, and we'll just be able to plug them into one of these four silos as we keep moving forward.
And was your ranking only from people that attend the meetings, or did you have any computer internet response?
Great question. The, the survey was taken online. It was provided online as well as physical surveys. You could go and pick up a paper copy of the survey, and you could turn it in at the Navarre Beach Utility. You could turn it at the Chamber. You could turn it in at the library. And then Joy and myself went around and collected some as well. But there was the ability to do it either way.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Williamson, I would commend you on the energy and, and the commitment that you've made in, in your first few months in office to engage your community. And I would, as we each go forward and look at our own districts, a few years ago, our board collectively went around the county and met in different districts and eventually put together what we call the Better Santa Rosa Plan. Mr. Walker and I often talk about this, the things that we've accomplished that came out of that plan. And also shortly thereafter, we did what we call the Rural Protection Plan up in the north end of the county. And one of the highest ranking concerns up there at the time was to protect that farmland. And so there are a lot of good information. Sometime we just need to go pull it and see how far we've come. All right. Mr. Commissioner Williamson, you said this is just for information only today?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number ten, Discussion of Preliminary Staff Projects for Submission of First Round of Restore Act Funding. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the, county's kind of in the, in the, in the middle, if you will, of its project solicitation phase of the, the first round of the restore funding, which, as Commissioner Lynchard, who serves as that chair, has briefed the board, there's four point three million dollars available in the, the transocean settlement. And that's kind of been the, the, the practice that the federal government and, and, and the state and, and, and the county too, is, is they're kind of using this as the practice for the big game, which will be the, ultimately when the restore settlement is, is, is completed and if and when that's done. And so we're going through the process. We, we, we're, we've developed the application. It's, we're going through the, the, the submission timeframe. That'll close out, I believe, in the next month. And then we will start ranking and, and going through the process of making a recommendation to that. These, all that to say, these are the ten or so projects that the county staff's working on, and you'll see how we've, we've approached this with the understanding that this is only the, the four point three million dollars available for all the projects. And, and cities are, are submitting projects. Both cities are. The county will submit some. There will be some that will be submitted by, by other organizations or NGOs. So th- th- these are the ones that we felt are our, first off, we feel like they're the most important. Secondly, we believe, believe that they will be the most fundable. And you see what they are, and we will be working on those. I'll answer any specific questions. We'll have staff here to answer any specific questions that you, you have. They kind of cross a, a wide range of, of projects and, and issues, from dirt road paving to beach re-nourishment to, you know, the sidewalks and, and lighting aviation, so.
Mr. Lynchard?
Just to note, these are not ranked in any particular order. This is just a listing of projects. And again, they'll be submitted by the, by staff and reviewed by the same technical scoring team that will review all of the other projects that come in under the application process. That is open now through April the third, I believe.
And those applications, is that just for the four point three million, or is that for future projects as other funding comes along as well?
This is just for the four point three million at this time. We're developing our multi-year implementation plan. So that's what we're, we're working on, is the four point three million. Now, we may end up with more or less on that list, but we are not, we're not, we're not coming up with the, the master list, if you will, that will, will deal with the, the BP settlement, because the range in that's twenty million to sixty million dollars. We just don't know how much we're ultimately going to have to work with. So we're going to plan around the four million dollars right now and hopefully have our multi-year implementation plan approved by the end of the year.
But as other funding becomes available in the future, then there'll be another round of project selection?
There will be. The multi-year implementation plan will be updated on a regular basis as projects fall off, projects come on. Even in the, the first round, the four million dollars, all of those projects likely won't be completed. The ones that are approved, because for whatever reason, funding that they're relying on from another source or permitting difficulties, projects will fall out of the mix. So we'll update that implementation plan to plug those holes as we move along.
And I guess one thing that I would point out is, is on, on each of these particular projects is I would, I would expect that they, i- i- if somebody will take, take an application, we're going to submit it. I mean, you know, for, for whatever silo or, or, or bucket, or whatever you're looking at, these, w- 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 try, try to, early and often, as far as trying to submit it to other programs. Because we think these are very good projects.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rob Williamson.
Just one question. Where can the public view these projects? I, I know that in the last Restore Council meeting, we had had some of these projects brought forward and were listed. I think this is a, a great list that at any point somebody can see if a project that they're passionate about or that's important to them isn't on this list, that that should be their cue to submit a project. This seems to be a pretty comprehensive list, especially given the limited funding that we have for round one. As Commissioner Lynchard was saying, it's going to be tough to possibly see if we could fund all of these. But where could the public view this? Because I know it's not currently up on the county Restore tab. Is that something we can be adding?
I would think, Mr. Chairman, after, after we approve this on Thursday, then we can put this on the Restore section of the website as the county submitted projects, so that everybody would have easy access to them.
Okay.
And the only, just a couple of suggestions on that. One, if it'd be possible to add the cost or the proposed cost to the spreadsheet, I could see where that could have value. And making sure, obviously, that we put on there that it is not, these projects aren't ranked, as Commissioner Lynchard has mentioned. And then a separate question would be, the frequently asked questions section of the Restore tab, that we could make sure that that gets updated as well on the county website. Cool? Thank you.
We would move this to Thursday's Agenda Without Objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number eleven, Discussion of Submittal of 2015, 2016 Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, FWC Artificial Reef Grant for Monitoring Navarre Beach Reef. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a, a letter from the Navarre Beach Marine Science Station, and, and they've asked to partner with the county in the submission of an, of a monitoring grant. And, and what they would propose to do, as you'll, as you'll see from what they indicate, is, is would be to use the monitoring grant to monitor the nearshore reefs there off, off Navarre Beach. You know, they already have that camera. They'll also, the, the state requires that you dive the reef periodically and, and, and note changes and note the, the fish and the other related items around there. So it's just how, 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 how the, how the reef's doing. In other words, they, they deploy, they have a reef deployment grant, but there's also a monitoring grant for those that are established, just to be sure that the reefs are still in place, they're still intact, then they're still operating as, as designed.
Any questions, comment? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's Agenda Without Objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number twelve, Discussion of Submission of 2015, 2016 FWC Florida Boating Improvement Program Grant in the Amount of Ten Thousand Dollars for Printing Water-Proof Copies of Excanbia Santa Rosa Boating and Angling Guide. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, this is the FBI P grant cycle. And, and I believe this will be the third printing that we've done in those boating guides. And I don't know if you've ever seen them, but they're ve- they're ve- they're very informative. They have a, a pretty detailed mapping of the, the, the waterways in, in our two counties and, and, and the boating areas with all the, the contact information and, and whatnot. Like I said, this will be the, the, it was, it was developed originally by the COOP Extension, their marine science agent, and I believe this will be the third printing of those.
Any discussion, comments? Commissioner Rob Williamson?
No cost to Santa Rosa County, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Without further discussion, I would move this to Thursday's, Thursday's Agenda Without Objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number thirteen, Discussion of Use of Courthouse Lawn Noon Thursday, May seventh, 2015 for Annual National Day of Prayer Observance to Include Use of Courtroom Three Hundred as Rain Alternate. I would move approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number fourteen, Discussion of Rescheduling Monday, May twenty-fifth, 2015 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, 2015, beginning at nine AM, due to Memorial Day Observance. I would move this to Thursday's Agenda Without Objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number fifteen, Information Only. Public Hearing Item Scheduled for nine thirty AM Thursday, March twelfth, 2015. We have none. Information only. And this, that concludes the administrative committee report. At this time, we'll go to the engineers' report. Mr. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item is, we recommend the resolution to accompany our local agency program agreement for the Tiger Point Boulevard Sidewalk Construction Project. The project was, agreement was approved, but it requires the accompanying resolution. So we'd recommend that for Thursday.
Any comment, discussion by the board? Hearing none, I would move this to Thursday's Agenda Without Objection. Hearing none, it passes. Mr. Blaylock.
Item number two is a discussion of a resolution in the locally funded agreement, and that's a lump sum agreement with FDOT for the design and construction of a westbound right turn lane on US ninety-eight at Janet Street in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. This project was approved by the board in November fourteenth of two thirteen Board Member Meeting with a total cost of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the agreement is included as backup. This is when DOT began to do the county incentive grant programs in, in-house. And this was our matching its maximum sixty-five thousand dollar contribution.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move this to Thursday's Agenda Without Objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number three, Mr. Blaylock?
Number three is a discussion of the request to eliminate sidewalks in Avalon Estates subdivision. That's in your back up as Attachment B. I have a letter from a Mr. Danny Miller, who is requesting to eliminate sidewalks. This, if I could have it projected onto my screen, projected overhead, please. Okay. Avalon Estates is located south on Mulett from Avalon to the intersection of Montecito. And just across the railroad track, you see Avalon Estates on the west side of Montecito Boulevard. This subdivision is not required to have sidewalks by our Land Development Code. Is not in the proximity of a school or a road directly connecting and serving a school. The original developer included sidewalks in the covenants and the construction plans and the development order. And Mr. Miller's, I think, is here to ask that they be, that requirement be eliminated. Mr. Miller.
Name and address, please. Name and address, please.
Just smash the button and release. Thank you.
There you go. That's it, sir. My name is Danny Miller. Address is sixteen hundred Reynolds Road, Quincy, Florida. That's where I reside. I represent the owners of Avalon Estates subdivision and respectfully request that the sidewalks be allowed to be eliminated in the subdivision for a number of reasons. May I continue, sir? The main reason is the expense, the cost, and then the maintenance, of course. And once the county accepts the roads for maintenance, the, the sidewalks within the common areas will become the maintenance requirement of the county. The sidewalks lead to nowhere. They add a tremendous amount of cost to the subdivision. And other reasons are, contributes to stormwater, difficulty of maintenance, those sorts of things. So based on that, I respectfully ask and request that we not be required to put the sidewalks in. It's not a Land Development Code requirement. It was simply put in there by the previous developer, who, by the way, failed. And a- as you all know, development business has been very difficult in the last eight or ten years or so. And any way that we can cut the cost would, would be, of course, greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Jair Williamson?
Thank you for putting me on the spot, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean, I understand with the Land Development Code, sidewalks not being required, sidewalks are something that I've always been an advocate for personally within neighborhoods, even if they don't necessarily lead to shopping or to schools or anything like that. It's just something that I feel. I know it is more cost on development. I'm in the construction business, so I hate to see more and more costs. But something like that is a quality of life issue. I support having sidewalks in all the new neighborhoods that are started in all the neighborhoods. So I would not be for going without the sidewalks in this neighborhood. That's just my personal opinion. If there are other members of the board who feel differently, then I understand that completely. But my, my personal opinion is that I would like to see those sidewalks in, in the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cohen. Ditto. That was a ditto. Mr. Rob Williamson?
It's, it's still very fresh in my mind, walking, knocking on thousands of doors for the campaign. And one of the things I heard overwhelming support for, and it was even reflected in the most recent study survey that we did, was those sidewalks and multi-use paths and how important they are. The last board meeting that was standing room only, two board meetings ago at the commi- Community Center in Tiger Point, we had to bring in extra chairs for that meeting. And after the vote was taken to fund the remainder of the cost for the multi-use paths on three ninety-nine, pretty much ninety-five percent of the room got up and left. That's what they were there for. It is a very important issue to folks. And I, I agree with Commissioner Jair Williamson. Then I, I don't want to see any additional expense added on to a project, but this is, this is important to the folks. And I, I couldn't support removing the sidewalks.
Then may I modify my request? Is that, is that a possibility? How, how about if we just eliminate the sidewalks in front of the common areas? And, and the common areas, you know, you, you really can't see it on that plat, but the common area, the majority of the common area is in front of the holding pond. But we, there's an interior section of lots, which you can see. What if we maintain the sidewalks inside the interior section and then eliminate the sidewalks on the common area where nobody's going to live? Would that be supportable by the, by the committee?
Commissioner Cohen.
I briefly said I agree with Commissioner Williamson earlier, but what we've seen, you know, I was on the board when Commissioner Gooden brought in sidewalks, and I thought they were silly. And since then, I've seen only more and more and more use of sidewalks. The ones built on eighty-seven South for, by DOT get used every day. I think people more and more enjoy sidewalks in their communities. It keeps kids safe, keeps them off the street if they want to ride a bicycle up and down the sidewalk. I only see this as passing the burden on from you as a developer to the county, because I would think in years to come, we'd have people, if, if this flourishes like you would hope it would and, and fills up, we'd have people in here wanting to do an MSBU or, or the county build sidewalks in these places. And I, I've been on the board long enough that I feel pretty strong And I've been on the board long enough that I feel pretty strong about that. I think doing it initially, including it in cost of your development, cost of doing business, and sharing that cost between, you know, the lots at this point would be a lot more prudent than doing it after the fact.
Understands, sir.
Commissioner Jair Williamson.
Which area are you concerned, the common area?
Oh, just along the holding pond area. That, right there. Yes, sir. That's, there are no houses along that area.
Yes, there's no plotted lots, planted lots proposed are, it's actually recorded along Teresa Drive and along the path of the area.
Yeah, it's right there.
And how about the south, I guess this will be the southwest corner of Carley Court, is this a common area through there?
It is a common area, but we would, I would agree to continue the sidewalks there because that would connect to the lots, to the residences on the northwest side and the south side.
Do you have any other comments on that as far as if we did remove the Teresa Drive, the northern portion there, but as long as, I mean, I would not want to do away with the Carley Court area, for sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
So for clarification, Teresa Drive, under where it says Teresa Drive, would have sidewalks all the way down to the entrance. The other side of Teresa Drive at the entrance, say from right about there to the entrance, would have sidewalks.
Yes, that's correct.
And then the rest of it would have sidewalks on both sides.
Yes, sir. Just eliminating it in front of the holding pond and that area. That would be acceptable if, to me, I mean, to put the sidewalks in the rest of the subdivision if that's a possibility.
I'll wait and listen to the rest of the board.
Pardon me, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rob Williamson.
I think within, it's not currently within the boundary or that circle that you need for a school, within being in close proximity to the school where you have the sidewalk requirement, but I believe there is a, there's been talk of a proposed school in that Avalon area. So I don't know what the, do you know what the future zoning is? It might be a Tony question around, like on the Mulett Road that borders Mulett Road area? It borders this subdivision? The elimination of sidewalks in front of the holding pond areas, would that create a gap in the sidewalks or would it just end the sidewalks sooner because of, the holding ponds are down at the end of a road? Is that right?
That's right. It wouldn't create a gap. It would just, the sidewalk would terminate, I guess it would be east of the holding pond area.
So we wouldn't have any gaps? We wouldn't have sidewalk, holding pond gap, and then goes forward?
No, not at all.
If we're just ending them early because the holding ponds at the end of the road, then I wouldn't have an issue with that.
Mr. Cole.
You've got quite a bit of property between your Teresa Drive where you have your outline of your lots and Avalon Boulevard. What's the plans for that wooded area there?
You mean where the lots are depicted to the east?
You have the lots all drawn out in blue, and from the lot line, upper lot lines that you have from Teresa Drive.
Yes, sir.
From there to Mulett Road, you have quite a bit of wooded area.
Yeah, that's, from Montecito Boulevard, it's actually on Montecito Boulevard, but there are lots on the, right on that northwest boundary up there. Those are all lots, and of course, the sidewalks would continue through there. They would terminate at the edge of the.
Well, I guess what my question, though, is, is, you know, you have no drawings in quite a bit of the wooded areas that you have here.
Commissioners, just for clarification, the blue lines you see represented have been recorded.
Okay.
And that is the plat, so there's no opportunity to change that at this time. That's just a vacant out.
Okay, to the engineer, then. What could be done with these vacant wooded areas in the future?
There's all those vacant areas outside the blue lines are set aside as either wetlands or common areas.
Okay.
So there's no possibility of adding any lots at any point in time. The subdivision is already plat and plat recorded.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Mr. Jair Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would support that we remove the sidewalks on the north side of Teresa Drive in front of the holding pond area because by doing so, we'd still have in that neighborhood sidewalks around the whole loop for connectivity of that neighborhood and to be able to get out to Montecito, but that'll help a little bit on the development side and kind of find a common ground. I could support that as long as no sidewalks are being removed in front of where homesteads will be.
Very good. I would be agreeable to that.
Now, I would hope by Thursday, we'll have something that specifies exactly what Commissioner Williamson just said.
Yes, sir. I can write a scenario to that effect.
Okay. I would move Commissioner, oh, Roger?
Yes, and the one comment is the developer would be responsible for, or Mr. Miller for constructing the sidewalk in this area where my arrow is, that vacant southwest corner property he agreed to.
Yes, sir.
Because no single lot builder is going to build that section of sidewalk, and so those areas will have to be constructed.
Yes, sir. Understand.
We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Number four, Mr. Blalock.
Number four is a discussion of the Plener Day plat for Stone Chase Phase Two. This is a 127-lot subdivision in a portion of Section 25 and work in Voting District One.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jair Williamson.
Same as last month, I had recused myself from the rezoning, but after speaking with Roy as far as the plot plan goes, I'm not going to abstain from this vote, but I just wanted, for full disclosure, that I did not vote on the rezoning just because that would create more lots, more houses, and we do a lot of work in the Stone Chase that might give me an advantage to be able to wire more houses, but I am going to be voting on this.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
And item number five is the construction plans for the aforementioned Stone Chase Phase Two.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes the engineers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Blalock. Moving to Public Services Committee, Commissioner Jair Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four items today. The first is discussion of approval of the mortgage subordination agreement for the property located at 4820 Hawkins Drive in Pace. I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, discussion of approval of the mortgage subordination agreement for the property located at 3933 Tuscany Way, Pace. I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three, discussion of approval to transfer title to two enclosed utility trailers from the Emergency Management Department to the Santa Rosa County Health Department. This is something that they're using already after I've had discussions with Mr. Gomillion, so I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is discussion of approval of the request from Cellular South to upgrade their equipment on the south tower consistent with the lease provisions and the following conditions. They will perform the necessary engineering analysis and provide engineered plans and specifications for the work to be performed. They will relocate the existing Osprey Nest consistent with state and federal requirements and will place a deterrent system around the antenna structure, and they will provide a approved third-party verification that the work performed was consistent with the engineered plans and specifications. I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the Public Services Committee today.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. This time, we'll go to Public Works Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of purchase of steel beams for bridge construction from Bell Steel Company at a cost of $23,083.06 based on comparison shopping. I'd like to move that to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rob Williamson.
Which, I didn't see in the backup where it stated what bridge that was for, or is this just inventory?
This is have on hand, I believe.
Inventory, okay.
It's stock.
Thank you.
Item two is discussion of resurfacing the following roads in District Three at an estimated cost of $246,188. Antique Lane, Shell Road, Buck Russell Road, Gene Fleming Road, Wiley Scott Road. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of reducing the speed limit to 45 miles per hour for the only remaining 55 mile per hour segment of Berry Hill Road. We all listened to the lady at our last meeting that was very fortunate that she didn't have more problem, or, you know, hurt, her or her child hurt worse than they were. We're doing this for the benefit of all our citizens, so I move that to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jair Williamson.
I just wanted to back up what Bob said. We heard from the lady a couple weeks ago, and for anybody that's listening at home or out in the audience today, this is not just a knee-jerk reaction to one person coming up and speaking in front of the board. I know, I'm sure Commissioner Salter hears a lot about this because he shares Berry Hill with me. His north pace boundary catches the north side of the road there, but I've had lots of people talk to me about Berry Hill Road. Now, one thing that I do want to put out there that the passing in front of, is it Whispering Pines, Whispering Woods neighborhood that sits just on the south side, Whisper Woods? I know we've heard a lot about people passing there, which has caused some near accidents and accidents. I think we're going to have to watch this closely because if they're passing people at 55 when we drop it to 45, that may cause some more people to be trying to pass. But I do support us dropping this to 45. I'd like to hear from Commissioner Salter on that as well, but I think this will be good for the area. It's a small stretch, and we could all use slowing down a little bit, even myself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I totally agree, and I've had several people ask us to look at reducing that speed. I often talk about you can't regulate common sense, and you can't regulate so far the use of text messaging and cell phones. I was on my way home the other afternoon going down Berry Hill Road. Car had stopped in front of me to make a left turn. I stopped, and there was a truck behind me, went all over the side of Berry Hill Road, and you could see him out there trying to hold his cellphone while he was trying to steer with one other hand. So here again, this is 1.2-mile section, kind of going down the hill, and gives him a lot more speed to gear up to, so I'm in total support of this, and hopefully one day we'll be able to regulate common sense.
Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Furman went to the trouble of giving us this statement, I'd like to read it into the record. I won't read all of it, but it says the current recommendation is to reduce speed limit on this segment of Berry Hill Road from 55 to 45 mile per hour. The segment between Preservation Boulevard and King George Parkway is the only remaining part of Berry Hill Road that is posted above 45 mile per hour. This section is approximately 1.4 miles, and the reduction of speed would only increase the time to traverse the segment by approximately 21 seconds. We believe this is a reasonable, cost-effective first step towards enhancing safety for this area. 21 seconds for a person's life is nothing to give up, so I support it and like to move it to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Okay. And our last item today is a discussion of proposal from McLean Tennis Incorporated for coating and painting of the tennis courts at Villa Venice Park in the amount of $10,400 based on comparison shopping for funding from the District Five Recreation Funds. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. On my backup, number one on the Public Works, I'm not sure if we moved that to Thursday without objection. If not, then I do so at this time. We'll move number one to Thursday's agenda as well, without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Commissioner Cole. This time, we'll go to Budget and Financial Management Committee, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got 17 items, 17 items this morning. The first of five bid actions, item number one, discussion of bids received for one 6,000-pound gross vehicle weight rating four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck for engineering. Hub City Ford Incorporated is the low bidder meeting specifications with a bid of $28,499. I recommend that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, discussion of bids received for one 6,000-pound gross vehicle weight rating four-wheel-drive pickup truck for landfill. Hub City Ford Incorporated is the low bidder meeting specifications with a bid of $23,899. I ask that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three, discussion of bids received for one 6,000-pound gross vehicle weight rating four-wheel-drive pickup truck for mosquito control. Hub City Ford Incorporated is the low bidder meeting specifications with a bid of $24,099. I ask that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four, discussion of bids received for one 6,000-pound gross vehicle weight rating pickup truck for mosquito control. Milton Chevrolet is the low bidder meeting specifications with a bid of $23,631.41. Move to, recommend move to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five, discussion of bids received for one 15-passenger van for Co-op Extension. Mackenzie Buick GMC is the low bidder meeting specifications with a bid of $30,353. I recommend that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Onto the budget items. Item number six, budget amendment 2015-111 in the amount of $35,128 to transfer funds from the TDC Fund to the Debt Service Fund for payment on the tourist information center in Navarre. I ask that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven, budget amendment 2015-112 in the amount of $25,000 to fund the participation in the Team Florida Partnership Program commitment agreement as proposed or as approved by the Board of County Commissioners on February 26, 2015, from electric franchise fee reserves. I ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight, budget amendment 2015-113 in the amount of $148,924 to recognize self-insurance settlement revenue in the self-insurance fund and allocate for expenditure. Recommend moving this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number nine, budget amendment 2015-114 in the amount of $10,000 to carry forward funds in the fine and forfeiture fund for temporary personal support. Recommend moving this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 10, budget amendment 2015-115 in the amount of $5,000 to fund the participation with Exambia County and the cities of Gulf Breeze and Pensacola to fund context-based maintenance of traffic study for proposed replacement of the Pensacola Bay Bridge from reserves and the general fund as approved at the February 26, 2015 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. This is related to that subcommittee, I believe. I ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 11, budget amendment 2015-116 in the amount of $206,500 to carry forward funds for the design services for the Santa Rosa Courthouse in Milton as approved at the February 26, 2015 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 12, budget amendment 2015-117 in the amount of $15,000 to recognize Florida Forest Service Volunteer Fire Assistant Grant and allocate for expenditure. Recommend that we move this item to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 13, budget amendment 2015-118 in the amount of $18,747 to recognize fiscal year 2015 EMS grant, prior year unspent funds of $14. The EMS grant was $18,715. Prior year unspent funds, $14, and interest earned, $18, and authorizes for expenditure in the current year. Ask that we move this item to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 14, budget amendment 2015-119 in the amount of $14,000 for the coating and painting of the tennis courts at the Villa Venice Park and for two basketball posts, backboards, goals, and nets to be funded from District Five Recreation Funds. Ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 15, budget amendment 2015-120 in the amount of $65,000 for the construction of a westbound right turn lane on US 98 at Janet Street as a FDOT County Incentive Grant Program. Project recognizing 50% local match requirement using Area III Impact Fee Reserves and the Impact Fee Fund is approved at the November 14, 2013 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Final budget amendment today, Mr. Chairman. Item number 16, budget amendment 2015-102 in the amount of $175,882 to purchase playground equipment for the Navarre Sports Complex from Playmore Recreational Products and Services, $173,882, and to build a 12-by-24 pavilion and two picnic tables, $2,000, from District Four Recreation. Four Recreation Funds. I ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here, none it passes.
And finally, item number seventeen, Mr. Chairman. The discussion of the county expenditures check register, I'm still in review and I'll have that for your signature on Thursday. That I'd like to ask that that be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here, none it passes.
That concludes the Budget and Financial Management Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Rob Williamson. We will now open up public forum. Wallace.
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. A few weeks ago, I got a telephone call and and somebody said to me that there were huge amounts of dirt coming out of Rooster Run off of Jeff Eight's Road. And it surprised me because as far as I knew, that was just supposed to be a dirt racing track that was going to be put on that property. If you look in my my paperwork about the fourth page in, you'll see the the site plan that was submitted for a conditional use approval for a dirt racing track. That was November of two thousand and fourteen, and it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Board and by the Board of County Commissioners. From looking at this site plan, I see no indication that there was supposed to be any kind of excavation at all on that property. The second page in is the conditional use signed by Sharon Phillips, which states, "I understand that approval by the zoning board of adjustments does not authorize construction and/or land clearing to occur on the site, and that additional approval and building permits may be required." And that is signed by Sharon Phillips. So I started asking questions of Leslie and Becky in Planning and Zoning. And turns out that according to the conditional use, they were not supposed to be conducting any kind of excavation or anything on that property until the final site plan was approved and they get their development order. So I questioned Leslie on this. Why is there excavation going on? Because in the in the site plan that was approved, it does not show any excavation or below-grade construction going on. And she states to me, "The track is below-grade as a mud pit for truck racing typically would be. Depth of the mud pit was not shown on the conditional use application, simply because it is not required, nor does the LDC have specific standards for mud pit construction." So we've gone from calling it a mud track, which was approved and put out for the public to see, to now calling it a mud pit. As far as depth of the mud pit was not shown on the conditional use application because it is not required, I disagree. That's the wellfield protection area. Pits are no longer allowed in the wellfield protection area. Nor does the LDC have specific standards for mud pit construction. And I to me, because there are no specific standards for mud pits, I think maybe this should have been looked at a little bit closer to maybe say, well, what should we do as far as standards for this type of activity? What should they be for public health, safety, and welfare? In number in the rest of her email, it states, "The spectator area will be located around the perimeter of the track area. They have placed farm fencing along the perimeter for safety. The Land Development Code does not establish standards for mud pit spectators." And to me, you're riding a slippery slope. There are no standards for spectators. Are they going to be leaning up against this fence to watch these races? If you look at all of the plans, you won't see any area that says "public viewing area." I don't see anything about bleachers or safety setbacks of any kind as far as keeping the public protected. After the November thirteenth site plan was submitted and approved, I now get a copy of the second submittal, which was turned in after I filed the complaint about the And now it describes it as a pit. The third submittal was February eighteenth, also describing it as a pit. The latest submittal is now saying that there will be a dirt track ten feet below grade and fifteen feet below that is going to be the mud bog pit. None of this was on the very first submittal. And according to the conditional use terms, I believe it says that the most you should turn in a site that's going to show you in the most detail what your project is going to be. And I think now this, the very last one that was submitted this month, is the most detailed site I've seen. And to me, this is the one that should have been before you and before members of the zoning board to to get a better idea of what was going to be done on that property. I think the public was blindsided by the initial site plan, which was put out for everyone to see. I looked at it. I know it's the wellfield protection area. I know we worked very hard to get the protection in that area, very hard and very long. I looked at this and I said, "Well, it's mud racing track. People like mud racing, I know that." But it didn't say anything about excavation. I thought, "Well, it's just going to be on top of the ground." I didn't like the fact that it was going to be mud racing trucks with gas spilling, who knows what, oil spilling. But I didn't I didn't say anything. I didn't have any complaints. And as you look further back, there are there are five photos which were taken that that shows how how that site looks now because of all the excavation. I also supplied you with a look at the site before the excavation with the Google Earth map. And it looks like, according to the the pictures showing the excavation, there's been quite a bit of excavation out there. I was told that a lot of this dirt was taken to Herbert Field for the overpass. I can only imagine how many tons of of dirt that is. I've seen that on TV, and let me tell you, that's a lot of dirt. And when I got this call, I was hoping the person was wrong, and I said, "Well, let me just go up there and and take a look." So I sat there and a truck came out full of dirt, and I followed it to Stewart Street where it dumped a load of dirt. How many knows? I don't know how many other loads of dirt had been dumped at that site. There's a funeral home being built in there, so I saw it for myself, and I was not happy that the person I talked to was correct. In the conditional use, six oh nine point oh two K, it talks about parking. "The parking area shall not be used as a loading or unloading area or as a location for a dumpster, repair work, dead storage, dismantling, display, sale, service of any kind, or for any other use except parking of vehicles." And from what I see on the site plan where there is parking, that is also where the fence is going to go around the track. And so are people going to be standing in this parking lot, looking up against a farm fence to see what's going on? I don't see any indication of where the public is. I see it for parking. I don't see it for people. I don't see anything for safety for people other than the fence. So I think a detailed explanation of what is going to be done to protect the public, I don't they they're not allowed in the parking lot according to this. This is conditional use, six oh nine point oh two K, and it says, "Removal of trees. Commencement of construction or other activities shall not be undertaken before site plan approval has been granted by Planning and Zoning Department. Tree removal permits shall be required within any area approved as an accessory parking area." So the removal of trees or any any other activity should not have been taking place until the final site plan was submitted. And I was told by Becky that if protected trees are taken, the fine is even steeper than that large fifty-three dollar fine for starting something you're not supposed to start in the first place. A fence or wall shall be permitted, provided the fence or wall is not within the required setback area. Variance to any of these requirements is prohibited. So I would ask you, please take a good look at conditional use, six point oh nine point oh two K, and you know, if these things that I found apply, please follow this project and make sure that the public is well protected. I would say that that you were blindsided because you didn't know this was going to be a pit. You had no idea, the zoning board had no idea that twenty-five feet down was going to be a mud bog pit. That was not clear on the on the initial submittal. As far as fines, I asked Becky, I said, "Well, if there was a fine because they started before they were supposed to, what would those fines be?" First citation, fifty dollars. Second citation, a hundred dollars. Third citation, two hundred and fifty dollars. Fourth additional citation, four hundred dollars. Well, if you've if you've got to go out there four times, shame on you. You should go out once and be able to be done. Don't waste staff's time driving out there four times when nothing should have been going out there, going on out there in the first place. There is there is a water well maybe eighteen hundred feet from this site, which is is a pretty good distance on Jeff Eight's Road. I'm thinking that probably notification of this project was just within a five-hundred-foot area, which means just on Jeff Eight's Road. How about all those people that live across the street in Plantation Woods? All this noise, dust, probably mud being drug out onto the highway. I don't think they were notified in any way because this was probably just a five-hundred-foot I would like to see changes made to that if there is a large community within a mile of something like this. I think they should know. This is going to be noisy, dusty, dirty, mud on the roads for, I think, eight months out of the year, March through October. So I would I would ask that a larger a larger initial fine be clearly stated on the conditional use application, and I think that fine should be five thousand dollars, first-time offense. Second-time offense, six thousand. Third-time offense, your conditional use is no longer yours. End of story. So that's all I have to say. Are there are there any questions or comments?
Questions, Commissioner Joe Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Mahoot, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and always being so concerned in in the area, especially when it comes to wellfields. One thing that where I totally agree with you is that it says right on the application that no work is to be done until there is a final approved site plan. And Mr. Gomillion, I don't know what we can work towards. You know, I understand having a I would think a lower-type fine for first offense, but the four offenses and just moving up steadily, I kind of agree. If there's a third offense, then the conditional use is is rejected or changed, and I don't know what we could look at, but I mean, that really gives somebody a little bit of a slap on the wrist for the first time. Second time, maybe a more hefty fine, but the third time, hey, we're not playing around because that could be taken advantage of. And I don't know if this case, if it was something that was overlooked or not, I would be making an assumption if I said one way or the other. But I think it is something that we definitely should look at. That would fall under Public Works, which is my committee committee. I'll be glad to to meet with you and Public Services, excuse me, and I'll be glad to meet with you, Mr. Gomillion, to see what we can come up with from there.
Right. And something else I thought of, too. If there's a larger initial fine, how about twenty-five hundred to start with? And it's notarized, it's a legal document. Would the notar if if it was notarized by Planning and Zoning and you were told this is a legal document, you you had been informed that nothing should go on here until probably you get your development order when your final site plan is approved, and we're going to certify this. This is a legal document, legal and binding, just so that when people are signing this, they're they're made more well-aware of, "Oh, I can't do anything until until it's really finally approved, not just because the zoning board said, 'Yes, I think this will work,' and and the commissioners agreed." I think it has to be a more forceful imprintment on somebody's mind that that this is real and and don't do it until it's finally finally approved. And the certification might, you know, make it more legal in that person's mind. I I really had no objection to this until I followed that truck that day, and I said, "Oh, I guess whoever called me really didn't know what they were talking about." I don't know what dirt goes for as, you know, as far as yards, but I can only imagine the profit that has been made from starting this project before it was supposed to begin. And so instead of a fine, I was going to say, "Well, let's suggest that they they make an offer of good faith to the community of East Milton, and let's have them contribute a thousand dollars to maybe something like East Milton Elementary, just as a gesture of goodwill and and we messed up." These people have been in business for a long time. I can't understand that they did not understand that they were not supposed to do anything until they got that development order. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And like Commissioner Williamson said, he'll be working with Mr. Gomillion to look into it. Anybody else from the public? Anyone else from the public? How about the board, staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Just want to say that I've had the opportunity Just want to say that I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Gomillion on a couple of occasions now discussing code enforcement improvements. And I agree that, I'm very happy to hear that Commissioner J.R. Williamson is going to be looking at ways to improve this since it is your committee down in District 4 specifically is where I've been focusing our efforts. And, you know, basically, Wallace, you're looking at maybe five or six loads of dirt is what would have paid for all of the fines that you mentioned. And I don't know how much dirt they took out of there, but it sure looks like more than five 18-yard dump trucks full. So I don't think we need to tackle what the initial fine would be today, how much that would be, but I'm excited to see what the county attorney is going to provide for us in the way of some type of an improvement because it sure seems right now that folks just factor into the cost of their development, the fines that they might have to pay. And if nobody complains, then they might be able to get away with it. And when it comes to stuff like the wellfield protection zone that this board and many other people worked very hard on and read thousands of pages in support of that, we get that in place to support and protect our water source. And then you see stuff like this and it's definitely frustrating. So we're working on it and we'll get there. Thanks.
Any other comments? We adjourn.